Hello, hello everybody. Welcome, welcome. I know some people are just now rolling in from that last awesome session that you just were at with Maureen. I tried to peek in and see some of it as well. So we've had a few Zoom sessions so far. When you enter in the chat, you can just say hi, you can say what you teach. I know most of you are here for ELA, but maybe tell me what grade level you teach, what specifics there are. And if you also wanted to share like what's been sort of one of your top takeaways so far? If you've attended other unconference sessions. Oh yeah, we got fifth grade, six through 10, nine through, that's me too, I'm nine through 12 also. Hi Sweden, oh that's awesome. Hi everybody, nine through 12. Great, yes. High school and middle school ELA, six through eight, I see seven through 12, nine through 12. Hello, everybody. Hi, welcome to this session, we're going to be looking at how to use Quizlet with ELA classes. I'll tell you a little bit about myself and then we'll jump into the session. But while I'm telling you a little bit about myself and my background with ELA, feel free to introduce yourself in the chat. And you could also let me know what's been your favorite features that you're seeing so far? Or maybe what's been one of your top takeaways from the sessions we've had? We've had some great sessions already today, and so I'm really excited to be included in the lineup. Okay, so my name is Dr. Jessica Pilgrim. If you want to search on Quizlet for study sets that I've created, if anything that I teach rings a bell with you? When you say, oh, I could probably use some of her stuff, then you might want to search my username for specific sets. So my name is Jessica Pilgrim and my username is Jess Pilgrim. So you'll see that there on the slide. I am a National Board Certified Teacher in Adolescent and Young Adult ELA. My doctorate is in education practice and I was part of a specific cohort that focused on creativity and design. I've been teaching for more than 20 years and most of my experience has been in a small Midwest public high school. And I'm also just an ed tech enthusiast. I love going out there and finding the tools that are available to make learning engaging for my students? And help them to achieve all of their learning goals. And one thing I love about Quizlet is I have been using Quizlet for over a decade now? And it continues to make changes and adaptations, coming out with great new features, some of which you've already seen today. And so it's one of those tools that I started using 10 years ago that I'm still using today. So a shout out to Quizlet just for always staying on top of things and for providing updated new improvements to the product. Oh, I got my doctorate from the University of Missouri-St. Louis. I saw that in the Q and A. If you have questions while we're going through, feel free to drop those into the Q and A. It's separate from the chat. So if you put your questions in the chat, I might not see them right away. But if you put them in the Q and A section, then it'll be easier for me to find them and answer those. I'm also going to try to get through as many questions that you have as possible at the end of my session. Okay, so again, today we're looking at engaging ELA lessons using Quizlet. Here is our agenda for this session. First, I'm going to talk about creating and sharing classes with students? Because that's the best way to make sure that they have access to all of the features available. Then we'll look at creating and finding the best study sets that are available. We'll look at assessing student understanding with both live and checkpoint? As well as a couple of other awesome features that are coming. We'll look at saving time with study guides, which was formerly known as Magic Notes. I love this AI feature. I'm sure some of you love it as well. Oh, I see Carbondale, Illinois, hey, that's not far from me, I'm in Trenton, Illinois. So hi Kim. It's awesome to see so many people here from so many different places. And then at the end, I'll have time for Q and A? And also hopefully a quick product demo of study guides to answer any questions? And show you how it works in real time. All right, so again, as we get started, you can share your name, location, and subject grade level in the chat feature. I love having a lively chat feature. So as we're going through these slides, if anything makes the light bulb go off? And you're like, oh yeah, yeah, I want to add something, this, I use this in my classroom too. And this is the best way that I find to use that. Please share it in, in the chat feature. I want this to be an experience where we can all share our expertise. Cause you're all, you know, professionals in education as well. I love to hear what you have to say. So keep it active in the chat, share ideas and tips as we go. If you would like to stay in touch, I have my contact information here, including my email, jess.pilgrim@gmail.com. You can find me on Twitter or X at JessPilgrim. And my Quizlet username is also JessPilgrim. And I'll have that at the end of the session too, in case you weren't able to catch it right now. All right, so first, the easiest way for you to make sure that your students have access to all of the resources? And study sets that you want them to have is by making sure that you easily create these classes. Classes will make sure that your students have access to everything, including learn and test. So you want to create classes and then you want to invite students to those classes? And that way, when you add study sets to those classes, your students will get access to learn and test for free? Not the limited versions that they would get otherwise. This will also help to keep you really organized. You'll be able to look at your classes and then you can see which study sets that your students currently have access to. You can add or delete study sets from your classes as needed to keep things neat and organized for your students. So for example, I will, at the beginning of a unit, so let's say I'm teaching my students Beowulf. What I would do is I would go in that class and I would add like the Beowulf vocab, my Beowulf characters? My Beowulf literary devices, all of the ones for that specific unit to that class. When the unit is over, I would take those away. And then I would have put in the ones for my next unit. So if it's King Arthur, now I'm going to adapt it and update it so my students don't get confused. They don't get lost shuffling around looking for any specific study sets. They just see the ones that I'm using for the unit at that time. Now, there are other ways you can do it, but that's the way that works the best for me. If you have other methods that you prefer, please feel free, yeah, someone said, why not just add a folder? That's a great idea too. So if you have ideas like that on what works best for you, go ahead and share that in the chat too, so that everybody can see it. That's just the one that I prefer for me, but folders is definitely a great idea too. When you create a class, you can customize permissions by allowing your class members to add or remove terms? And to add members. Now typically I turn those options off, you can see them here on the screen, I'm going to click them off. Right, if you have a group of students who are older or maybe really trustworthy? And you want them to be able to create or find their own study sets, then this would be a good option. But otherwise generally, I recommend not giving students the ability to add and remove sets? Or to add and remove new members. So now that you've created your classes and invited your students, you want to create some awesome study sets. So you can ensure that your students have this access to the study sets through different methods. I'm starting to get ahead of myself. So including learn and test, if you want your students to have access to these classes? Quizlet has made it super easy to add your students. So you'll see here, I have arrows pointing to the different ways that you can add students and have them join your class. So down in the lower left, you'll see that you can enter email addresses. You can invite by using Google Classroom, which is my favorite. That happens to be the learning management system that my school chooses to use. You can also generate a link and then you could post that onto your LMS depending on what you use. So if you use something other than Classroom, you could generate a link. And then you'll see it here on the right hand side as well. Okay, another option would be you can have students join using a QR code. So if you don't use Classroom and you're worried about the link for some reason? And you don't want them to just like type out a URL? Because I know my students have issues typing in a URL correctly. What you could do is you could use a QR code generator? And then students could scan that with either their phone, if they're allowed to have phones in the classroom? Or they could scan it with a Chromebook or an iPad or something like that? If they have photo-enabled devices that they're allowed to use. If anybody has a favorite QR code generator or even a link shortener? That they'd like to share on the chat feature, please feel free to do that. I love to share those sort of things. This one was created, you can see here with Bitly. But if there's another one that you'd like to use, please feel free to share that in the chat feature. So there you could use a QR code or again, you could use a link shortener. Yeah, so tiny URL is another really fantastic one as well. Thank you for sharing that in the chat. Okay, so now you have your classes. You have students in those classes. Now it's ready to start by sharing some flashcard sets. So this is awesome because you can create your own study sets very easily. You can create them from scratch or you can create them using Study Guide? Which I'll demo here in a little bit. We saw a little bit of that in the earlier sessions if you were able to attend. So here you'll see it's great because in this, this animation here? I'm entering in some of the different Greek gods and goddesses. And when you see the definition populate, that's not actually me typing it in. Quizlet is giving me prompts. It's asking me, do you want to use one of these definitions? And so that way I can pick the one that is the best for me. So already it's saving me time by suggesting potential definitions that I might want to use. So I love that it does that for me. And again, you can also pull words from a specific text? Or a YouTube video or a file that you upload using Quizlet's AI features? But I'm going to demonstrate that a little bit later. All right, if you find study sets that you didn't create? You can also copy the ones that other people have made and then you can adapt them to fit your needs. So why reinvent the wheel? There are tons and tons of Quizlet study sets out there that are already available for you? That teachers just like you have already made. And again, if you think anything that I teach might be interesting for you? You can search Jess Pilgrim in the search bar where you would type in your topic? And then you'll see all of my public study sets. Okay, and again, there's tons of teachers out there who have already done this very thing. So you can look at their study sets. And when you see a set that you like, you can save it and you can edit that study set. You can tweak them to meet your needs. You can save yourself time by copying and adjusting those study sets. And I'm going to show you some of the ways that you can adjust them. Okay, so let's take a look at how you can make improvements to an existing study set or your own study set. So what I've done here, and this does include some premium features? Is I took a study set that was about different pieces of Shakespeare's Globe Theater. One thing I did was I added a diagram. This was an AI-generated diagram image. So I searched using a prompt and I think the prompt was generate a lifelike cross-section of the Globe Theater? Including actors and attendees or audience members. And then that's what it generated right here. So I did that, that was one way I improved it. And then if I wanted to, take a look here at the bottom portion of the slide. There are your premium text-rich features. So you can use bold, italics, underline, you can highlight in different colors. You can add audio, if you want to add audio, which is awesome? If you want to make sure students understand how to pronounce things? I always say that Greek mythology is a struggle for pronunciation, things like Poseidon and Hephaestus and things like that. If you want to make sure that your students are pronouncing words correctly? Or if you're doing a foreign language or the word happens to have a foreign etymology? You might want to record the pronunciation for students. And then on the far right, you'll see also where you can add images. And that's another thing that Quizlet will do to help save me time? Is if I click on that image spot to the right of the definition? It will actually suggest different images that I might want to use for that particular term and definition. So that's awesome to me, just that it gives me a little helping hand there. Oh yeah, so I have a comment here. It's good to add color codes for different parts of speech, for example, like purple for nouns, blue for verbs. Yes, and I've also done this before, like I have a study set on characters from one of Shakespeare's plays? And I color-coded words like antagonist, protagonist, stock character, comic relief, different things like that too. Or if there's words that are qualifiers like always, never, sometimes, often? And you want to highlight those, you can do that as well. So those are just really great features that will help your students study? And maybe draw their attention to specific words that you're using in your term. This is also great, like as a differentiation strategy as well for students? Just again, to help them draw attention and focus on specific things? That you think might trip them up otherwise, or that they might not notice otherwise. Okay, so Quizlet has tons of activities that are ready to go at a moment's notice. These include things like Classic Live and Checkpoint, which you are probably already familiar with? But it also includes really exciting new things too, like Blast and Categories, which I'm going to show you. So using some of these different gamified assessments? You can determine what level your students are currently at? And that can be used to inform your instructional decisions. So for example, if you're running a Classic Live or a Checkpoint? And the scores are not as high as you would like? You will make the decision that obviously that's a topic you want to go back and reteach? Or if you see that students are really just knocking it out of the park? And they're ready to move on, then you can go on to more challenging content? Whether that's another study set or bumping it up from something easier? Like a match game to something more difficult like a practice test? So Quizlet is always coming out with great new activities and features? That are going to help meet your students where they're currently at. So again, if you have questions as we're going, you can feel free to put those into the Q and A? And I'll try to answer those as we go. And if you have any ideas as we're going through this, please feel free to share those in the chat feature as well. All right, so flashcard sets. One of the modes that I love is Learn? Because it offers so many options for differentiation and customization for each learner. It's all about helping students where they're at, differentiating, providing students with a learning opportunity? That's customized for them? And Quizlet is really going to allow you to do that. So I have some of the different features here on the left-hand side? And you can see like a recorded demo here on the right-hand side. So let's look at this session of Learn and how it can be customized or adapted? For individual learners to provide a unique study experience? If we look at the left-hand side, there are options to study only the starred terms? So you can star terms as you go through, marking them that, oh, that's something I really need to come back to? And get more practice on. You can shuffle terms, you can toggle on or off sound effects? The main sound effect, it's like a really happy sort of dinging noise when students get the question correct? So I kind of like it because it's that like positive feedback, like good job? But if you want it turned off, then that's fine too. If students are working on this independently on their Chromebooks? Or their iPads or other devices, you might not want that sound effect going off? Throughout the classroom and you might ask your students to turn that off while they're working through the study? You can do multiple choice questions, you can do written questions? And you'll see demos of both of those question formats here on the right-hand side? And then there's also write mode, spell mode? You can view the question format, error checking options, and then text-to-speech options as well. So there's just lots of different things that you can do here to help your students regardless of what level they are at. All right, another really wonderful mode is Test. So with any flashcard set, you can do tests? And again, this is one of those features where it's limited if your students are not already in a class? But if you create a class and then you add students to those classes? They should be able to access this feature unlimited. And you can do different types of test questions. Again, you can look at the features here and your options on the left-hand side? So this has a max of 10 because I only had 10 flashcards or terms in my study set. If I had more, then I would have been able to do more than 10. You can have individuals answer with either the term or the definition? Or both, where it would split it up and do an even amount of each? You can pick true, false questions, multiple choice questions, matching questions, or written? Now, in my opinion, true, false, and matching, or sorry, true, false, and multiple choice? I think are the two easier options. And matching and written are what I would give students who are ready for more of a challenge. So if it was early on and we'd only sort of discuss these terms or worked with these different terms? A couple of times, then I would have them start off by working on true, false? And then once they're comfortable, I'd say, okay, if you feel comfortable with true and false? Level up the difficulty and now I want you to practice multiple choice or matching? And then when I feel they've really mastered it and they really want to see how they're doing? And then I would recommend that they try using the written mode? But I think that they're really kind of listed here in order of difficulty? From least challenging to the most challenging? And on the right-hand side, you'll see actual gameplay? Or I shouldn't say gameplay, but to me, I feel like so many things, even tests are almost gamified here? You'll see that I'm matching, this is a matching test? Where I'm matching different colors with what they symbolize or often symbolize in writing? So I'm clicking on the term and then I'm scrolling up and clicking which color I think that term goes with? So again, there's just lots of really awesome options? And you can print practice tests too, if you want your students to have paper copies? Which is another great thing, because I do have some students? Where one of their accommodations is that they get paper copies rather than screen copies? And this is a nice feature that they have as well. All right, so next, let's take a look at Match. Now Match is one of my favorite modes because it's quick? And it lets me know how students are doing. It's also, it can be visual. If you look at it here on the right-hand side, you'll see I actually added pictures to the deck? But they were blocks of color? You kind of saw that on the last slide when I was doing the practice test? But this is what it shows up like when I'm doing a match game? And this is fantastic for my visual learners. So I made the background of the word blue actually blue, purple is purple? And so it helps them kind of click the definition and then the term a little bit quicker. Okay, so this is really fun. It's low stakes, you're really not competing against other students? So they're not as afraid of a failure, they're more likely to be engaged because it's that low-stakes environment? So I recommend that they just compete against their highest time? And maybe measure when they played the first time versus when they played their final round? How much improvement did they see? That way you could really, you could emphasize growth rather than emphasizing a specific score? Again, this is really great for visual learners and it's something that they're going to really like. There is a leaderboard if you want to look at the leaderboard? But I always like to emphasize the growth from the beginning of their study session to the end? Rather than emphasizing any sort of final score. Now let's take a look at different gamified ways you can assess student learning. The first two, Live and Checkpoint are probably old favorites for most of you? But we're also going to take a look at Blast and Categories? Which are two new options that are coming out? And again, I love that Quizlet is coming out with all of these awesome new features. I know my students are going to love Blast, I played it against myself a couple of weeks ago? And it was just fun, just to see how it works and blasting those asteroids. So Quizlet Live, I'm going to play the video here, I'm going to turn the sound off though. All right, so Quizlet Live is a fun and fast-paced assessment tool? And it only takes a few minutes to play? So your students can join a game of Live with a game code? And then the teacher can either have students compete in small teams, usually three to four? Depending on the numbers in your classroom? It usually divides it up evenly into small teams of three and/or four? And it gives them their team names or animals? So I like that too, because there's this sense of anonymity? Where there's low pressure on students? Because the leaderboard's not going to show like this student's name came in last? It'll just show a team name? And because it's collaborative, there's a little bit less pressure as well? So teams compete in real time and the leaderboard is updated during, updated, excuse me, during gameplay? This works best if the teacher projects the leaderboard onto a whiteboard? Where students can see their results as they play? If students play in teams, the answers are divided up evenly among the team members? And then you can see it on their individual devices? It's almost like somebody took a word bank and then tore it into three even pieces? And gave one to each person? So the answers are on one person's screen in their small group? So they have to work together to figure out which one of them has the correct answer? And you can kind of see that here on the screen right now. So this is also a great opportunity to teach or emphasize collaboration in your classroom? And class norms regarding competitions and games? So it's fun and you can kind of go over what it means to be a good sportsman? You know, do you have good sportsmanship? This is how we root for people when they win? That kind of thing emphasizing those behaviors and class norms as you go? And then if a teacher has a premium account? You can assign students to custom teams, like you can create the teams? Because it'll just show up as teams, one, two, three, four, and so on? So you might group your students and then say, okay, everyone here in this small group? You're going to be part of group one. Everyone over here, you're going to be group two. So you can assign them to groups specifically. And then there's also the option to have students play individually? Now, if you want to do individual again, like in small groups, it's anonymous? It has the team names, so like a lion or a stingray or something like that? Instead of the actual students' name? So again, I like this because it protects students who don't feel like they know the content quite well yet? And I stress the yet, because with Quizlet, they're going to learn the content? But this is just a whole lot of fun for students. It doesn't feel like a true assessment, it feels like something more fun. When I play with students also, just to build a sense of community? I like to shuffle the teams several times. I have students sitting in their small groups, they'll play a couple of rounds? And then I shuffle and they sit with a new group? So I really like that because group play provides an opportunity to activate that prior knowledge in your group? It helps build confidence? And then you can switch to individual mode later on to assess individual student learning? And then decide if additional teaching is necessary? So use that data and figure out what you need to do next? Yeah, I see some people absolutely love Live, thank you for sharing that in the chat feature too. I love it too, it's definitely one of my students' favorites. And then there is also, let me turn off the sound here. Okay, so there's also Checkpoint, which is really nice too. This is one that students play individually, it's not a collaborative, it's not a group assignment? Unless you decide to have them work in small teams? And then work on one shared device, which you could do that if you want to? I prefer to use this with students individually as a very informal formative assessment. It helps the teacher assess student learning? And then again, you can use that data to see where students are struggling? And then adapt teaching as needed? So it'll show me at the end of the game what terms students struggled with most? And which ones they really are, are great at, which terms they've mastered? So then I can say, oh, well, I saw these three terms were the ones that they missed the most? So those are obviously the three terms I'm going to need to go back and reteach? Clarifying any sort of misunderstandings? And then emphasize before we can move on? So Checkpoint is awesome for individual formative assessments. All right. All right, so this is a new, a new-ish game mode that I think everybody is going to love? We saw this earlier in some of the other sessions? It looks like a game that you're going to be very familiar with already? So the study set terms are divided into categories. I did not create the categories, Quizlet made the categories for me. So I had a, this was obviously from a Greek mythology study set? And it's, yeah, I've been seeing a lot of people are excited about this feature. I'm excited too, it's going to be so much fun! But this is a study set that I created and it, it could tell from the AI built-in? That, oh, it looks like some of these are Greek gods and goddesses? Some of these are mythological creatures? Some of it, it's going to group as trivia? But it created these categories for me? And then it automatically put different definitions into each of those spots? So I didn't have to sit here and go, okay, 100 points, I'm going to put this clue? And 400 points, I'm going to put this clue? So it's awesome that I was able to create this game in, you know, seconds? It just made it for me, it generated it so quickly? So this is one that I'm really excited about? This is ones where students don't even need their devices? The teacher can project this up on the whiteboard? And then you can have students individually or in small groups? Small groups would probably be best because you'll have more students engaged at one time? But you'll have them choose a column, a category? And then choose a points value? And then the teacher can click on it and reveal the, the term? And then the student has to figure out what the, or sorry, reveal the definition? And then the student has to figure out what the term is? So this is one I'm really, really excited about and I know that you guys are too. Okay, another one, and this is awesome? I did this one earlier this week, like I said previously, I just played against myself? Because I said, wait a second, this wasn't here before, what is this? And I got so excited to play, even though I was only playing against myself? So you'll see here, I'm actually both of these characters, I had two different devices that I was using? So I'm working on a team here with myself? So I'm working on a team here with myself and I am just blasting. It has the term, if you see it up there at the top, so. For example, the term is three goddesses that can, oop, sorry, it switched. Three-headed dog guarding the entrance to Hades, so I shot Cerberus. So it goes through and you just have fun zapping the correct answer. So I know that my students are gonna love this because they love like the outer space games. They love the collaboration aspect as well. So this is one of those features that I'm super, super excited about. Alright. Alright, study guide. So if you've used this before, it was formerly called magic notes. And this is a huge time saver because you're letting AI do all the heavy lifting for you. So the awesome thing about this is that you can paste text. You can use a file from your computer like a Microsoft document, a PDF file, a PowerPoint. You can upload a file from your computer. You can use a Google Doc. You can use a YouTube link. How many of us have videos that we love to share, but we wanna add a couple of questions for student accountability? And our reflection on the video and we need a little help coming up with those questions. Well, study guide is going to do that for you. Not only is it gonna do that, but it's going to create flashcards. It's going to create sample essay questions. It's going to create a Q chat for you. All by simply adding in a text, a file, a Google Doc, or a YouTube link. So this is awesome. There's so many material, materials that are being created for you just by adding. Those content items. So this is what it looks like. To help you create materials, you'll see here, pe- uh, paste the texts, you can copy and paste. You can upload a file from your computer, a Google Doc, or a YouTube video. And then it's going to create an outline. That's the first thing that you'll see is this outline. So here, the outline I created was about the evolution of English language and you see it divides it into main points. And then sub-points for each of those. So personally, this is awesome. I would print these out and keep them in my unit binder. Just to, as a quick refresher. If it's something I haven't taught since the previous year, it's nice to have that and then like take a look. If you have students that uh, maybe part of their IEP or five oh four. Is that they get an accommodation where you provide notes, you could do that. If you have a student who is just kind of struggling and needs that extra support or that scaffolding, you could do that. Another idea is you could print this outline, you could cut it into strips. And then you could give those to students in small groups and have them assemble the outline based on the reading. Okay, so that would be a fun hands on, on the activity for your students as well. That's one thing. Okay, so whenever you use study guide, it's also going to make flashcards for you. When you import that text, it just automatically pulls words that it thinks you might need to use. For flashcards, like this is your text, I'm pulling these words. As different possible vocabulary words that you might need. And because it's creating flashcards, then it's also creating those other supports, the learn, the test, the match, the blast. Anything that you had before with flashcards, you can do with these flashcards that you created with study guide as well. And I love this, study guide discussion questions. It generates several sample discussion questions and they're at multiple levels of difficulty. So if you look here at the uh, the visual. Discuss the role of the monarch in the medieval feudal system and analyze how their authority impacted the structure of governance. That's a level two difficulty. Explain the significance of land ownership within the feudal system and how it influenced the relationships between different social classes. That's a level three question. So it's generating questions at multiple levels of difficulty. Which I love because that is providing a great opportunity for me to differentiate my instruction or my assessment. Or to provide student choice. And let me show you what I mean by that. You can use those questions and make a choice board. Now, how you use that choice board is up to you. So one thing you could do here is you could tell students, maybe you just want them to answer one question. So you could let them pick a level two question or a level three question. Maybe you could also say, you have to have six points. So then they could choose, do I wanna do two level threes or three level twos? Maybe I wanna remove the levels and just say, pick three, but you get to pick the three. They won't know what levels they are. They just see six questions and they're picking three. So there's lots of different ways you can do this. You could assign the lower level questions to students who need more support. And the level three questions to students who need a challenge. Or you could let them choose. And anytime we're offering a little bit of option and choice. You're going to be improving student motivation and student engagement cuz you're allowing them to take a little bit of ownership over the learning. So again, I love the fact that it's coming up with these leveled choice questions that I can play around with to create a choice board. If you have other ideas on how to use this, please feel free to drop those into the um, into the chat feature too. And then you also have the option for Q chat. So this uses the power of AI to generate a customized differentiated study session. That responds to the students' answers. And here's a screenshot of me interacting with the Q chat. It has teach me, quiz me, apply my knowledge, and ask a question. And I will also tell you that not only is the feedback positive, it's very supportive, like look. Close, but not quite. And it gives you like a little, you know, like a little support, like a pat on the back, like you're close, let's try it again. Or correct, like it's always giving you this positive feedback. But also, if students try to type in something like, I don't know and I don't care. The Q chat doesn't take that as an answer. It still will respond with positive feedback and encouragement. So if students are trying to be like a little sneaky and see if they can throw off the chat, it's not going to do that. So I, I love that part too. Alright, so here again, I have my social information, so that way if you'd like to connect with me, you can. Here's my Twitter or X, it's just Jess Pilgrim, short for Jessica. Careful because there's only one L. I also have my Q chat information and my email. I'm gonna put that up here for a second. And then I'm gonna pull up my actual Quizlet account. And show you what study guides looks like for anybody who have, who hasn't done that yet. Um, so I see where are the leveled question choices. I'll show you that here in a minute when I pull up my Quizlet. So if anybody wants to take a screenshot of my socials or a picture or write those down, please feel free to do that. I'm gonna shift gears now and switch to show you my Quizlet account. So let me stop this share. Okay, and then give me one second while I switch from my presentations to my study sets. And if while I'm doing this, you wanna share one of your um, top takeaways just from this experience so far today? At the unconference, please feel free to share that as well. So what you're seeing right now, this is what it looks like when I log into my Quizlet. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to pull in a piece of text from Project Gutenberg. If you haven't seen Project Gutenberg before, it has um, free resources, like different books and things like that. Um, that aren't copyright protected. They're in the, in the public domain. So what I'm gonna actually do is I'm going to pull up just a tiny piece of a Christmas carol. I'm gonna copy it and I'm going to paste. So let me over here. I'm gonna click over here and I'm going to start a study guide. And then here you see I can paste text, which is what I'm going to do. Okay, if I have it saved as a PDF file already on my computer, I would have that option. Or I could go to Google Drive or YouTube, but I'm just gonna do paste text. So I have just a few chapters here from um, A Christmas Carol. Now I'm going to click on start transforming. And you're gonna see here in just a minute, it's going to create some really awesome content for me in just a matter of moments. There we go. So see, it has it divided up already, the introduction to Marley's death, the description of Scrooge's character, the setting and context. And then it also has other points here. And check this out, I didn't mention this, but when I hover over some of these. You'll see that there's AI built in. I can dive deeper, explain this, see an example, reword this. So let's say I want them to reword it. Now I can add this, so it creates a new bullet point. Or I can use this one to replace what I had clicked on. So I'm gonna add. And see, so now it's added it as an additional bullet point. So this is the outline. Uh, again, I would print this off for myself as a teacher resource where I can go back and refer to it before I teach this particular chapter. I could also give this to students as an extra support. I could chop it up in scissors after I printed it out and then have students. Rearrange the outline if I wanna teach outlining skills. And then I'm gonna scroll down here. And this is where I have the sample questions, the discussion questions. This is difficulty medium. I have difficulty easy, sorry Desiree.
Uh, uh, I'm just interrupting cuz we are not seeing your screen actually. We're just seeing the. Very, yep, we're not seeing the um, uh, the Quizlet screen.
Oh no. Okay, let me try stop share again. Oh, thank, okay, thank you everybody for letting me know. Okay, let's see. Can you see it now? Or is it still mine?
Yes, now we can see your Quizlet screen. Yeah, yeah, you may have shared the tab instead of the um, the screen, but yep, you're good to go now.
Okay, so let me do that magic one more time. I'm going to paste in my text. And then I'm going to start transforming. Gonna save it. And you'll see here in just a minute, it's going to create some awesome study materials. So here is the outline. I'm gonna scroll through it so you can see the outline that it's created. And then here, if I hover over different lines, there's this AI option to dive deeper. Where I can pick explain this, see an example, reword this, or remove that bullet. I'm going to click on explain it. It's going to reword it for me here. And then I have the option to add it or to replace the original. I'm gonna add it and you'll see that it's now added as an additional bullet point. And then I'm gonna scroll down to the discussion questions because I know somebody asked about that. So here are the discussion questions under the outline. This one is difficulty medium. Here's a difficulty medium, an easy, a medium, a hard, and another hard. So it's generated six different questions for me at different difficulty levels and it shows example. Answers that students might be able to use. And then down here are other study materials. I've got the flashcards. So I could click on flashcards. It's populated different terms for me. I can edit those different terms in flashcards. And here's where I can go in. I could add images if I want to. I could take out some of the terms, like maybe residuary. Legatee is something I don't need. I can remove that. Okay, and then I can save it. And then from here, I can play match, classic live, blast, checkpoint. I can do Q chat, a practice test, learn mode, or flashcards. I'm gonna click on Q chat really quickly. Looks like you're studying A Christmas Carol. Let's begin. And let's say, I just say, I don't know anything. Quizlet's gonna be supportive. The term starts with the letter U and refers to a person who takes care of the deceased before burial. So then I can type in the term, but it's very supportive. It's not really negative. It's trying to be supportive of me. You're close, the term you're looking for is undertaker. Oh, yep, I did have a typo. And I always warn students to be careful with this and just look for any sort of AI hallucinations if there's anything that's incorrect. Um, because that's always a possibility with any AI feature. And then um, you might even incentivize it, offering your students a, a prize or extra points. If they're able to catch anything that's incorrect. Okay. So that is the last of my presentation. I'm going to stop the share and I'm gonna view the um. Okay, great. Oh, thank you, everybody. Copy this to paste, where to transform. Yeah, okay. So hopefully that clarified some of it. Let me look at the Q and A. I'm not sure if you can add alt text to images within flashcards. Yes, but yes, you can print the outlines. You cannot specify the language or lexical level of the questions as far as I know. It just automatically generated those questions for me. Categories isn't up right now, but it's a feature that's coming. Oh, thank you, everybody. If you don't mind dropping into the chat feature, what's something you're really excited? Or maybe a big takeaway from this presentation, I'd really appreciate it. You can just put it directly into the chat feature. And then I'm going to add my email to the chat as well. If anybody needs to email me. And then on Quizlet. Or on X. Yeah, oh, I'm so glad you guys love the features. That's awesome. And I hope you um, attend some other sessions today. There's one coming up at one thirty, setting up for self-driven study, student quiz, and there's also a student Quizlet demo. So the sessions already have been really amazing today. Yeah, I use it as a formative assessment. Yes. I don't think you can save my profile on Quizlet to your homepage. I think you'll have to search for it. In the same spot where you would search for a specific topic. Yeah, oh, okay. So if anyone has a question that was not answered, you can email your question to unconference underscore twenty twenty four. At Quizlet dot com. Yeah. Alright, I will stay to answer questions that anybody might have. I know the next session starts at, I believe, one thirty. So if you want to leave the session to give yourself a break, grab a drink of water, anything like that, please feel free to. And then I'll put my email in the chat feature again. It's Jess dot Pilgrim at gmail dot com. Please feel free me to, to send me any questions that you might have, or if you would like links to any of my resources, you can do that as well. But I'll hang out for a little bit if anybody has questions. But if you don't have questions, I hope you have a wonderful day and you learned something new that you can use with your students right away. Yeah, thanks, everybody. Yeah, thank you, everybody. Have a wonderful day. Oh, thanks, everyone.